People in the audience had any more questions on the bond issue and all that's going on with that. So, one of the first questions I was asked, and the two councilors will be here in a minute, was asked to give a budget, what it could look like on the half cent if you split it up in the general fund and how it would be broke out if the council had the authority. This is not the council's opinion, this is Billy Plaller trying to like out and prepare a budget for the council and then have to approve it. So, they haven't looked at it any more than I have looked at it. Well, I have looked at it, Brenda and I have, but they haven't looked at it, this is the first time they've seen this, so if you want to look at that right quick, because that was the question that wanted me to present tonight. On the first page, I've split out the half cent to 40 cents street and 40 cents to City General. If you see that $217,000, that would be added from, that would be additional money to City General for next year's budget if the half cent passes, okay? We're dealing with two issues, we're dealing with half cent and the one cent, and one cent stay water and sewer. But the half cent, I put a quarter there. If you go to the second page, if you look over there in column D, that's the extra money that y'all have talked about, wanted to break it down, it's kind of how we can do it possibly and the council couldn't do different. $10,000 more in animal control, which would put $28,000 there, $17,000 more in parks. On the next page, $40,000 for fire department and vehicle reserve. On the next page, $60,000 for police officer, $10,000 for expenses for his police car. The next page is a breakdown of how the $60,000 salary comes up. And then the last page, the full quarter of a cent that went bought in last year was $217,500, and the balance of the quarter of a cent, the $58,750 would be put in street fund. Now, y'all asked for that, that's not something the council was going to blow up tonight because it's not done. If the sales tax got approved, this would have to have more discussion with Billy Plaller. But y'all asked for what it might look like, so there it is, in a quick town and dirty, and it's not been going through budget with anybody. Y'all just asked for where the numbers might break down, I'm trying to give you how the numbers might break down. Is there any questions on what the budget might look like next year if you put the half cent in City General and allow the council to break it down, that's what they might suggest for next year. But there again, I'd have to present, if it gets broken down, I'll present it to the council, and this is the way I would present it to the council, and the council would have it. They're welcome to change it any way the council wants, because it's the council's budget, the mayor does present it. But that would be my way of breaking the half cent down if we get the sales tax re-approached. Is there anybody who got any questions on that before we go into this?
I do. So, this is the entire half cent to general?
Yeah, well, yeah, but I put a quarter of it in, to start out straight with, in the street, because street and general are playing with the same money. So, I put a quarter of a cent to start with in nothing but street, and I put a quarter of a cent in general, everything else, and at the bottom, there was $58,000 left, so if you look on that last page, the full quarter would be 217, for the way the money came in last year, and the extra 58 would still go in the street. So, it'd be a little more than a quarter of a cent going in the street. And if you look at three years ago, if you go back to this book that we provided from Stevens, if you look at three years ago, a quarter of a cent only brought in $217,662. So, you're putting into budget more in street than the half cent was generating, because that was 217,500. Okay?
Okay.
I made sure we put the 217,500, that may not have been exactly the quarter of a cent, but I put the 217,500, which was the three-year ago number that that money bought in. So, it stays the same, and then you'd have an extra $58,000, okay?
So, by this, you would propose that the whole half cent go to general fund and the council?
That's the way the ordinance is, when we left the other night, that's the way they're going to present the ordinance system.
Only a fourth cent in general fund, a fourth cent in the street.
The way the lawyer's going to present it tonight, it'll be presented as a whole half cent goes into general, and then the council would have the right to break it up. Y'all asked how we would look at it, everybody said we know we're going to have at least a quarter of a cent to stay in there. The quarter cent in each one's not tied, it's at the council's discretion if you do it this way.
So, you propose that doing it the whole, the half, the whole half cent into general fund would allow street to actually get more after this budget?
No. I broke it down, because we were talking, we knew it had to stay a quarter, so I roughly put a quarter of a cent before I started taking any money to any other account, make sure street was covered first, and when I put the monies that we went over, you've got $58,700 over, because I started with a 217 in each spot.
Okay, I'm with you now. Thank you. I'm there.
Okay. And I personally, the council's not going to take the money away from streets, okay? But we can move some of the money, because the sales tax from three years ago is generating enough more revenues since everybody's buying on lines, paying in, that's where the extra money is coming.
Thank you for doing this.
Okay? Now then, if that explains that, we've got 15 minutes. If we need to do more, and we're going to the council meeting, we can, but I would like to cover the issues on, any other questions from what had been discussed from the council? Or what had been discussed from the audience on the four other meetings we've had on all this, and I'm going to ask the question in a minute if nobody else has one. I'm going to ask my question, and I'm going to let them give us an answer. Some of the concern on Facebook has been, we're going to take everything away from water and sewer on the one cent tax, it's all going to water. We're refinancing all the sewer, the $5 million refinancing is basically water, another half basically sewer, so we're not taking anything, that number may be, I may be off on that, so don't worry. So, back here to the front sheet, he can show you, Greg. There's some of those bond issues, that, one of them, the $923,000 is straight sewer, right? And then this total is the, all the water, okay? That will still be, you're still funding sewer money out of that bond issue. Do I understand it, Brenda? Because those were going to be combined. Then the roughly $328,000 that is left above debt service in the one cent tax will be put in an account that can be spent on water and sewer, am I correct?
Yes.
So, we're not robbing sewer money from everybody. This water project's got to be done, there's not, that, you already got a letter from the health department? We did get our answer on our filter rerate, we got our filter rerate, we'll go over that tonight in the regular council meeting, but that's just about time, that did not get you out of having to do that project. That's a 20-year-old scheduled project, not something coming out of you, and the health department wants it done. So, has anybody got any questions in the audience on anything else that needs to be answered? Because the way it was left here the other night, the one cent will go to water and sewer, the half cent would go to City General, and that's the way the ordinance, well, yeah, general would include streets, because streets, it would end up in street fund, because street money can't be mixed, but general fund money can be mixed, so. Yes, sir?
I'd like to say how much we appreciate you coming down there and explaining what was going on down the, by the trestle.
You're going to explain out a whole bunch more when we get into it?
That was really an eye-opener, and thank you.
Okay.
Why I see this, the reallocation of the funds is basically, a simple way to me to explain it would be, we've got a fuel card for F-250 diesel, but we're having to drive, you know, Honda Civic or whatever we drive, and we got money in this account, but, you know, you know, it's kind of like, you know, we don't, our police force is on barely skinning along for one thing, and if we have, just say, just say we're six bucks away from coming to Webb County, well, with that, you're going to get some other things, it ain't all going to be everybody drinking cold blood in your bed, you're going to have a certain amount of domestics and a certain amount of other things. And it's not to say I'm for it nor against it, I'm just stating the fact, but we need to be able to reallocate stuff in an intelligent way instead of lining up with huge amounts of money in the wrong places.
I have one more question that I would like to explain. You explained this at the first meeting. You said under Act 605, explain how we reallocate the tax, the sales tax, to where we're paying 100% on the note payment, it's going to be better than the way, because the way the bonds are written right now, we're paying a specific amount only on debt service with the sales tax, is that correct?
I didn't say your question.
Okay.
Sorry.
The bond issues we have right now on the sales tax, if we collect $1,000, and it says, but it says specifically, we make a bond, the payment is so many dollars, and the extra money just goes over into the surplus account, but with the reallocation, we'll be making the full debt service on the total $9 million.
With sales tax, yeah.
With sales tax and no rate.
With no water and sewer revenues, that's correct.
And we're not getting full credit for that sales tax money today, the way that's written?
Well, I mean, it depends on your rate analyst, right, and how they interpret the rules, because it's not very specific, but how we've looked at it, how we would interpret it is, you know, if you're, if you're using some sales tax collections to pay debt service, you would take that into account in your rate study, like you would, does that make sense?
The gentleman from rural water that we talked to when the council was back in British, was mayor, he said if it's specific, it will be applied specific to debt service, and you'll get full credit on it. And he was very, he said, I got to see how it's written, but you'll make sure it's written that where the full debt service of that $9 million will be paid for first with the sales tax written.
This is not going to be, that's right, there's not going to be any water and sewer revenues pledged to the bond, so you will not be using water and sewer rates to pay, you will use the sales tax collections, that's how our documents are going to be.
In today, Brenda, we are having to pay.
That's right, it's a double, it's what we call, it's what we call a double barrel pledge, so your bonds that you have right now, your 2004 bonds and your 2006 bonds are secured by both sales tax collections and, on the one hand, and water and sewer revenues.
It's a fourth, a fourth, a fourth, and a fourth, in account for water and sewer. So, that's not giving us full credit when we have our rate study.
Okay.
Everybody understand that? That's a big deal. Okay? Got it, council, y'all got all y'all's questions answered on that particular issue, you've got a lot of things going on, and I want to do that before, since everything that we've been doing on this has been just a public meeting, this is public, and not the council meeting for a couple of minutes.
Will we get a copy of the actual draft of the, what would be on the ballot?
I don't bring enough copies, but, yeah, it's probably a little bit difficult to print, so if she does, you have to get a copy of it.
The man I have a vote for tonight, we'll get your copies.
Okay.
She's got, we got to get all, it's got to be voted on, it's got to be filed, all that, and we'll, we'll get copies, and if we get a copy back, we can, we can make our copy of it tonight, it's a deal, once everything's signed, we can get that voted on, and you can get your copy of it tonight.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a copy of the ballot with me, but I do have it already drafted, so we should be able to get that and recover.
Are you wanting a copy of what the ballot would look, or are you wanting a copy of the ordinance?
Really vote.
Could you email it to me?
We can get you.
Yeah, the ordinances are also going to be published in the paper next week.
Okay. I don't subscribe to the paper, so I'll come and get a, I'll go through the documents.
We'll get, that's not a problem to get them, at this, at this exact, next hour or so, man. You're taking your time on that.
Are there variations of the ordinance, like, for the council to choose from? I mean, it's just a general question, so you drafted it, and you're going to present it, and?
This is what came out of the fourth meeting session, that's what those were far, was how the draft had been presented.
Okay. So, another question, did we get any responses or answers on grants today? That was the reason for happening today?
No, A and R seems to like their meeting.
Okay, so we, at this point, we're going to vote on that without knowing if we're going to get any grants or not?
Yes, because of the way that the schedule is for it to get on the ballot, they're going to have to make a decision in order to get it on the ballot. In order for it to be funded, January 1st, they're going to have to make a decision tonight. I mean, we pushed it off and pushed it off, we extended it to that 17th, hoping to get that, and postponed that too, so the council's going to have to have the ball tonight, for them to be able to do their part.
So, really, we have a forced vote, right? Because we didn't get the results?
Yes, it's a forced vote.
Well, we didn't get the results, right?
Well, here's the results, no.
Is there relevant to me, I mean, I'm 100% against new taxes, but I'm 100% for this, because I can see clearly what's happened, it's like me giving one of my daughters $50 to go eat and letting my other daughter starve from that.
Here.
I'm just asking about the grant, that's all, because we thought we were going to get it today, so kind of some unfinished business for me in my mind that says, we said we were going to get that answer to those grants, and we don't have it. Do we have any indication of when we might get that?
State, is any of you hearing anything more?
No, all I've heard is the meeting was delayed, probably the same email.
You know, tonight's vote is just for them to vote for it to get put on the ballot, it's not necessarily passing, and I mean, we obviously have to go vote, the vote is fixed for all that, so if something changes in the next, you know, couple of months before it's time to vote, I mean, all that can be changed is vote.
Here is, if I understand this, this vote we go through, if you voted for, and you voted for up to, you're voting up to $4 million of new money. If you get the grant, and you don't need to bargain $2 million, then you'll only issue $2 million. You won't issue, if you were to still get the grant, you will still, you'll just reduce the funding, you wouldn't barry for $2 million, you'd barry $2 million.
That's what, that's what you said about Sarah, that's what Sarah said about not to exceed, that word, that word.
That's right, that's right, yes, so the each ballot question with respect to the bond has a maximum principal amount, and that's, yeah, that's like your ceiling, but you don't have to issue that up to that full amount.
Okay.
If you're certain. I just remember voting on the worst-case scenario.
Yes.
Right.
And if we have this in place, and we get, were to get the grant, then the issue of the bond would be, we would only issue a bond for the difference of what we needed to do the project, it wouldn't be $4 million. I don't know what grant we'd get, what percentage, if we get a grant, it won't be 100%. The last money the city got, all this type of money, and the city got 25% of the 4 million dollars, that's right. So, you could get, if you were to get a grant, then we could only be asking for 25% of the $4 million, and that's all you'd issue bonds for. Then if the sewer project come back up, though, the downside of this, if the sewer project were able to do later, we would have to go back and pay to have another election to issue the balance of the bonds, am I correct on that?
No, you wouldn't have an election to issue the balance of the bonds, what you would have is a step, you would have like a new question just on issuing sewer improvement bonds. So, the ordinances that are going to come before you tonight are, do not include a sewer improvement question, so, but what we are doing is putting the infrastructure in place, so to speak, so that in the future, if you were, if you decided you were able to afford it, ready to move forward with it, you can go back to the voters and do just a sewer improvement bond question. That would be secured by the sales taxes, if they were approved by the voters.
What happens if it voted down?
I'm going to go through, I'm going to go cover a bunch of scenarios tonight, that's going to be part of my presentation, so. If you don't mind waiting.
All right. 6:29, is that close enough to 6:30 for me to call the council session? It's 6:29, by the time we get to heaven's fur, I'm sure we'll be at 6:30, we'll break the late, so. Alan, you'll sit there.
She's been some good, some kind to us, and we appreciate you working out far over town, or at least I just do right, like you and you just.
Okay. My congratulations is provided by United States of America, and a true liberty, which stands, one nation, under God, in the dismal, liberty and justice of all. You got a little more, please? Chris Fuller.
Not that one.
Alan Moore. Jimmy Clark.
Here.
Gary Brady.
Here.
All friends. James. We just have it on the list, we need to prove city council minutes for April 10th. We left that one line out of the agenda, we still need to prove it. Alan made a motion, I have a second. Call it favor.
Aye.
Okay. Both. I got one of them.
I'm going to give you the right.
No, do a. Do you have a ballot sheet for March 31st, you got it? You have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
April, we're dressed all right, then.
I'll make a motion on April, just let it hang on the floor, water under the bridge.
Good.
So, I'll make that motion.
Make a motion to tip April's financials. You have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
April, we're dressed all right, then.
I'll make a motion on April, just let it hang on the floor.
You have a second? I didn't get anything. You weren't supposed to vote against me.
No, I said I'll make a motion on April, just let it hang on the floor, water under the bridge.
Good.
So, I'll make that motion.
Make a motion to tip April's financials. You have a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
We see a lot of these financials too, just to make a note, in and out of there signing checks and looking through stuff, so, just for people.
This is money already spent, if you need to do something, you go back, let the budget. I'm going to turn it over.
Okay. Okay, so, you all should have four ordinances and one resolution that are reporting tonight. This is the video, so we're going to do it. That's okay, that won't, I can keep talking. Okay, so, I want to, I, there's a few things I want to go over before we start getting into each ordinance, so I want to talk through, one, kind of what you have now, and what your sales tax collections are going to look like after the election. And then I want to talk through some scenarios on if certain questions got approved, or, and certain questions didn't get approved. Okay, so first, what you have currently, you have a half-cent sales tax that can only be used to pay debt service on sewer bonds, some existing sewer bonds, they were issued in 2006. You also have a one-cent sales and use tax that has been dedicated, and 25% of the collection for that one-cent tax can be used to pay debt service on a water bond that was issued in 2004. 25% of the collection for that one-cent tax can be used for water and sewer purposes, and then 50% of that one-cent sales tax can be used for street purposes. And so, kind of what we're here to do tonight is to put to the voters a reorganization of sorts of your taxes. So, here's what you would end up with. The first ordinance, and I'm sorry, we'll get you copies, but the first ordinance that's going to be before you is levy, it's called a new half-cent sales and use tax, but think of it in your mind as it replaces the one that you currently have. That half-cent tax would be used for street purposes, general municipal purposes, and debt service on the bonds. That's just in case that your elections went down and you needed some extra coverage, your bondholders will appreciate that, but we're not anticipating that you would need to use that half cent for debt service. So, sort of as the mayor explained earlier, he gave an example of how that half cent could potentially be allocated in your budget next year. The second ordinance that's going to be before you is going to call an election on that half-cent tax. The third ordinance that's going to be before you is going to amend your ordinance that levy your one-cent tax, your original one-cent tax. And what that will look like, if the voters were to approve it, is that it would be used to pay debt service on bonds, and it would be used to pay water, for water and sewer purposes. So, whatever amount of that one-cent tax that's left over after paying debt service would go back to the city to be used only for water and sewer purposes. There's going to be a resolution before you that's going to refer that ordinance to the voters, and then there's going to be an ordinance before you that is going to have three bond questions. The first bond question is going to be refunding the 2004 bonds. The second question is going to be refunding the 2006 bonds. And the third question is going to be bonds for new improvement to your water system. And this will be secured by the collections of the one-cent tax and the half-cent tax. Does that make sense? So there's going to be a total of five questions on the ballot. And if all the questions get approved by the voters, you'll get everything you want, right? You'll get revenue to use for street purposes, for general municipal purposes, whatever the council decides. You'll have funds available for your water and sewer system, and you'll have funds to pay debt service on your bonds. And if your voters voted no on all of the questions, nothing will change. And in order for you to complete your water project, you'd have to look at issuing water and sewer revenue bonds. So you'd have to pay it from collections of your water and sewer revenues. Does that make sense? Okay. Now, the more complicated scenarios, okay. What happens if the voters do not approve the changes to the half-cent tax, and they vote yes on everything else? You would have no dedicated revenue coming in for streets or general municipal purposes, and you would have less coverage for your bonds, for your debt service. And the, you, you as the city council would have to decide if you wanted to refinance your two thousand and six bond or not. What happens if the voters do not approve the changes to the one-cent tax, but they vote yes on everything else? No bonds would be issued. And you could potentially end up with a tax increase if they voted no on the changes to the one-cent and yes on a new half-cent. Does that make sense? Then no bonds would increase, no bonds would be issued, so that other half-cent would stay on the books. Does that make sense? Okay. What happens if the voters say yes to re, uh, yes to everything else, but no to refunding your two thousand and four bonds? That's the one that's secured by twenty-five percent of the collection of your one-cent tax. Twenty-five percent of the collection of your reorganized one-cent tax would have to be used to keep paying on that bond. Does that make sense? Okay. What happens if the voters do not approve refunding your two thousand and six bond, but they approve all the other questions? Then, again, you would end up with a net tax increase. You can still do, you can still refund the two thousand and four bond, you can still do your water projects, but that other half-cent would stay on the books, paying for the two thousand and six bond. Does that make sense? Okay. And finally, what happens if the voters vote no on the water improvement bond question, but they vote yes on everything else? You can refund your two thousand and four and your two thousand and six bonds. You get the sales taxes rearranged how you want them, but you would either have to do your water project with a bond secured by water and sewer revenues, or you'd have to look at going to the voters again at a later date to try to get that issue to get. Does that make sense? Those are all my, those are all my scenarios. Does anybody have any questions about that, or what might happen?
I do.
Yes.
All right. Um, okay. The goal, the goal here is to reallocate the existing assets, basically. And so, but if we were to vote it down, we stand in jeopardy on item one of, or item two, ultimately having a tax increase, which would be, could be oxymoron, sort of, because people be like, oh, I, I, I've got enough control, and then vote it down, and then wind up in worse shape.
Well, if they vote no on everything, nothing changes.
But it stays in place on, if, if it starts breaking up, and that one you said stays in place, it's gonna. Okay, I had made a note here that said it eliminates an existing and replaces it with.
Yeah, that's like a way to think of it, but if they vote no on a new half-cent tax, and they vote no on refunding the other, nothing changes, your, your tax rate stays the same, and you don't get to do any bonds.
But our water and sewer will be, at, pretty much will be, like, we, we could be in a real serious bind, if, right or wrong.
If you can't afford to do.
Our general funds in shambles now.
Yeah, if they vote no on, if they vote no on everything, nothing changes in your financial situation, does it, does that make sense?
Yeah.
And the sad thing about it is they don't know on everything. And we've got money in an account that could be making the payments, and can't use it for that, because that's not what it's dedicated for. We're gonna have to put four million dollars in provision to the water departments, while they go on the rakes. There's no need in doing that if we reallocate this. If we don't reallocate it, the health department's already got your letter, and they, you're not gonna dodge the bullet on, is it relevant where you think it ought to be, rural water, city water? That's all water under the bridge from whatever Sharon was mayor twenty-five years, thirty years ago, when he decided to be a regional water supplier. We're a regional water supplier, we can't get out of that. There's not any way out of that, so that, we can't say let's, let's not fund Norman, and let's not fund Nor, let's not get North By County water, just keep making a Glenwood system. That, that water went down, that's already passed, that's already over the dam down there Arkadelphia forty years ago, thirty years ago, whenever that was, it was done. So we can't go back on that, so whether you agree with that scenario or whether you don't, we're gonna be, we're gonna supply water to Norman, and we're gonna supply water unless North By County eliminates to go somewhere else, and there's not anybody else there to provide for them, and we work with them, so. We're there. Andy, is that?
That's great.
There's not, we're not gonna get out of doing this right. Now then, you may postpone it, kick the can down the road, two or three years. The project gonna be done, or we'll be in fiscal distress, we already have that letter. If we have a way of doing the, the four-million-dollar project without raising, we can reallocate this and not raise. I think our rate structure's gonna look a lot better in under, under six oh five, when you get the rate study done, with a hundred percent of that nine-million-dollar debt being paid for. Mr. Stevens over there, am I wrong, that's, we're gonna look a lot better if that whole debt's being paid for with the sales tax, that's dedicated for that, rather than having it in the rate structure. We're gonna pull five million dollars, well, probably four million dollars. Whatever the, thing, over the twenty-five percent of the note payments we're paying today. I don't get President to give me that number, but I'm not sure what it is. The quarter cent that's dedicated is all that can go for the note payment. And the way we're gonna do it, all of it can go for the note payment, we're gonna get full credit for that, and whatever we're making today on the payment out of our rate structure, that'll come out of the rate structure. I didn't say we're not gonna still have a rate increase, that's an unknown, but it will be less than where we're gonna be if we don't do it. Does everybody understand that?
Some of us, I understand you, that things are gonna happen, we need to make it even on ourselves, or not even on ourselves, but it's gonna happen regardless. Not necessarily getting it passed, but the health department's not gonna tolerate us not doing, doing the water to the best of our ability with our funds. But at the same time, you know, something that I think about quite often is, if someone calls, they want somebody, they don't, you know, there might be anti, you know, funding police, for instance, I just, gonna top my head, anti-funding is something, but whenever they get in a domestic at their daughter's house, there will be someone there, you know, and.
I don't like being quiet.
I, I guess what I'm saying is, we're gonna, the, the people will have more control as a citizen with this, to where our hands aren't so tied to be able to do, address the issue at hand. Is that right, Bill and Earl? Whatever word.
Be great. That's, yeah, so from my perspective in terms of the rate studies, what we're talking about here is the water and sewer bonds will be paid, I mean, the water bonds will be paid for by sales tax revenues, and it will have no impact on your water and sewer revenues as of now. What we're talking about is this particular debt obligation, what happens in the future, like, the other things is separate questions, that piece. This is just focused on the four million for this particular project.
Well, it would also be focused on five million to refinance, because whatever, whatever is in debt that we're having to pay for out of rate structure now, it'll come out of rate structure.
That's right.
And that's a big deal.
Yeah, all, all of your debt proposed under these ordinance will be paid for by the sales tax revenue, and will not be paid for by the water and sewer revenues.
And the debt, like they said in that six oh five, that would be considered, but it gets structured that way.
Yep, the reason why it's considered now is because of what was mentioned earlier, is you do have water and sewer revenues that are correct, are pledged to that, so there is an obligation on the revenues, perfect, so that takes into account where they talk about your rates and where they need to be.
But it wouldn't make a bit, because it's not.
Because it's not.
Structured like that.
That's correct, so the way we're structuring this particular bond offering, this particular debt obligation, is it's secured only by sales and use tax revenues, period, it does not have an impact on your water and sewer revenues.
Does that flip that part of you?
Yeah.
Ask the lady.
Mayor.
Yes?
If the, if none of this passes, if the Rural Water Association, who sends this letter to say, so we gotta fix it, to be able to provide water in places, but if they don't do that, we make them take up the whole.
Ask the question one more time.
If none of this passes, and we, we're unhandable, so we do what we need to do here to reallocate what moves us. If none of it passes, is the Rural Water Association then come take control of your system?
If we don't, Andy, you could probably explain that, eventually if we don't do the, if we don't do this, we'd either have, we'd either have to put it in the rate structure, or at some point in time, and I don't know what date that is, you'd be in fiscal distress, and we'd lose the system.
Right, but if the rural water system.
Would not.
It would be a health department action. So rural water system, too, not. Does any, does any state department come take it?
Be the health department.
And they would come take control of it, and they set the rates.
That's correct, correct.
And we could end up with two or three guys that would take it.
Yeah, because whoever they get, the minister's gonna get compliance with the law, and they're gonna make money at it.
Okay, are we ready to, we'll pick the ordinance, please? Is there something that you guys heard that we didn't? Yeah, I just didn't have, I just didn't have, I think there's more copies, but no, I don't, yeah, there's more copies. Sorry, she had asked for a copy before you came in. It's okay.
Somebody wants, please, I want some copies, extra, yeah, if anybody wants another copy of these, I can get them, they're right here.
Okay. Okay, so the, the first ordinance that's before you is gonna be ordinance number twenty-three dash oh two. This is one to levy the half-cent tax for street purposes, general municipal purposes, and debt service on bonds.
That's all, you take a whole pack, that's a package. Here you go. There's two more sets out here.
Does any council member have a question about the first ordinance, just ordinance number one? The first one?
Yes, ma'am. I was sitting there looking, I done read the, the number one right here, if you ask, I thought it was.
Twenty-three oh two, there you go.
The second, uh, the third item now, so where's the city council? The city is currently levying a one-cent settlement and use tax under the authority of authorized legislation. Is there any way, let's, I know we're at the end of the game now, but is there any way to word that, where it's just like a little, you know, what I figured, just glance at it, like.
No, it's just, it's.
Initially glanced at it, looks like a word, just kind of, it's like a new tax.
Well, I know, and it says new, but that's how it's gotta be written in the statute, yeah, it's just how, I mean, ultimately, if everyone votes yes on all the questions, you're gonna end up with the same tax rate. Your taxes are not going to increase. So that's the thing to keep in mind, but how it's worded is, I mean, that's just how it's got to work. Just because the, the half-cent tax that you have right now is levied under a different statute. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Well, I was, I was, put out, and I was leaving for the ballot, correct?
This, there.
These are the ordinances, the legal.
This is the ordinances that are adopted, that are going to be adopted by you. The, how it's worded on the ballot is, if you can see this, this, what's gonna be on the second ordinance?
Okay.
This right here, that's what's gonna be on the ballot. It has, this is like the.
I don't have ordinance one.
There's only one that starts with two.
Yeah, there's, I've got her, there is a one.
I got an extra one right here.
Yeah, in the upper left-hand corner, that's for y'all, right, that's, that's for y'all, brother, that's not like the actual. That's so we can keep it all straight.
Make sure she goes.
I'm sitting here wondering what they're talking about, because I'm reading, I'm losing.
One, two, and there's three, that's stable together. You gotta go through this float, ordinance three.
Okay, so we're just on ordinance one right now.
There it is, I found it.
Yes, sorry, didn't think that was.
D C P, great.
All right, any questions?
Are there any more questions on ordinance number one? If they're not, now, mayor, would be the appropriate time to entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place the ordinance on its first reading by title on.
You have a motion?
I, I, there's.
You got a list, or is it worded properly?
And I filled the top copy out, but the ordinance.
We're just formalizing what we've already been discussing, is that correct?
That's right, now we are, okay.
Alan made the motion.
Alan made the motion to.
To suspend the rules and place the ordinance on its first reading by title on.
Suspend the rules. It gotta be right.
So then, what do I need to read?
This is, you don't need to read, I'll read the, yeah, we need a second.
I need a second, Michael. Thank you, Mr. Chris. All in favor?
Please hear both of them.
Roll call.
Say your name.
I'll give it.
Roll call, Jimmy Clark.
Aye.
Carrie Brady.
Aye.
Chris Fisher.
Fuller.
Fuller.
Aye.
Chris Fisher Fuller. Alan Moore.
Okay, and then I'll read, I'll read the title. Ordinance number twenty-three dash oh two, an ordinance providing for the levy of a one-half of one percent sales and use taxes in the city of Glenwood, Arkansas, and prescribing other matters pertaining there, too. And then if we could have a motion to suspend the rules and place it on its second reading by title on.
You have a motion?
I'll make it.
Jimmy Clark made the motion. Second?
I'll second it.
Carrie Brady. All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll second. Chris, so roll call, Jimmy Clark.
Aye.
Carrie Brady.
Aye.
Chris Fuller.
Aye.
Alan Moore.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash oh two, an ordinance providing for the levy of a one-half of one percent sales and use taxes in the city of Glenwood, Arkansas, and prescribing other matters pertaining there, too. And then if we could have a motion to suspend the rules and place the ordinance on its third reading by title on.
I'll make the motion.
Chris Fuller made the motion, and second? Alan Moore, and second? Roll call, roll call, Jimmy Clark.
Aye.
Carrie Brady.
Aye.
Chris Fuller.
Aye.
Alan Moore.
Uh, ordinance number twenty-three dash oh two, an ordinance providing for the levy of a one-half of one percent sales and use taxes in the city of Glenwood, Arkansas, and prescribing other matters pertaining there, too. And then if we could have a motion to adopt the ordinance.
You have a motion to adopt theirs? Carrie Brady made a motion to adopt.
I'll second it.
Alan Moore seconded. Roll call, please. Jimmy Clark.
Aye.
Carrie Brady.
Aye.
Chris Fuller.
Aye.
Ellen Moore.
Okay. All right. The second ordinance that is before you, it's gonna be numbered, officially numbered twenty-three dash oh three. It's, but up in the top left corner, it says ordinance number two. This one is calling an election on the levy of the half cent tax. Does that make sense? Um, and then you can see, uh, kind of as your question earlier, what it's gonna look like on the, this question, on the half cent tax, it's gonna look like on the ballot, it's right there on that front page. That's exactly what the ballot-
Right here, those parts, what, the-
Yes, where it says for and against, that's the form of what will be on the ballot for this one. This is your first question on the ballot. So we're gonna go through the same process again. So if, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, but if we don't have questions, it would be appropriate, Mayor, to entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place the ordinance on its first reading by title on.
Is there any questions?
I, I have, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm just trying to do this right.
You, I mean, if you just keep track of like the names, you really could fill it in later.
Okay.
You know, whoever makes the motions and I'll, and they'll make it.
And this is for twenty-three oh three?
Three, yes.
Any questions? Any more questions?
This is just put on the ballot first, before we let it-
Yes, that's it.
I'll make that one.
Roll call. Jimmy Clark.
Aye.
Carrie Brady.
Chris Fuller.
Aye.
Ellen Moore.
Aye.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash oh three, an ordinance calling a special election in the city of Glenwood, Arkansas on the question of levying a one-half of one percent sales and use tax within the city of Glenwood, Arkansas, and prescribing other matters pertaining there too. And then if I could have a motion to suspend the rules and place it on its second reading by title on.
I'll make that motion.
Chris Fuller made the motion, and second.
I'll second that.
Carrie Brady. Roll call, please.
Jimmy Clark.
Aye.
Carrie Brady.
Aye.
Chris Fuller.
Aye.
Ellen Moore.
Aye.
Uh, ordinance number twenty-three dash oh three, an ordinance calling a special election in the city of Glenwood, Arkansas on the question of levying a one-half of one percent sales and use tax within the city of Glenwood, Arkansas, and prescribing other matters pertaining there too. And then if we could have a motion to suspend the rules and place the ordinance on its third reading by title on.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Chris Fuller made the second.
Roll call, please.
Jimmy Clark.
Aye.
Carrie Brady.
Aye.
Chris Fuller.
Aye.
Ellen Moore.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash oh three, an ordinance calling a special election in the city of Glenwood, Arkansas on the question of levying a one-half of one percent sales and use tax within the city of Glenwood, Arkansas, and prescribing other matters pertaining there too. Uh, and then if we could have, again, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but if you're ready, we can have a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Any questions?
No, I would like to know, all we're doing is putting before the big book. It's not like we're sitting there passing them. We're just getting on them, getting on the ballot.
That's right.
I just wanted to hear it.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Jimmy Clark.
Aye.
Carrie Brady.
Aye.
Chris Fuller.
Aye.
Ellen Moore.
Aye.
Okay, I guess attached to your, now we're gonna move on to ordinance number three. It's a three in the top right-hand corner, might be attached to you. And it's gonna be officially numbered twenty-three dash oh four. This ordinance is amending ordinance number oh-two dash oh-two, um, and it's changing the purposes of your existing one cent tax. And I'll be happy to explain that again. What you have right now is your one cent tax, twenty-five percent of the collections of your one cent tax go to pay debt service on a water bond that was issued in two thousand and four. Twenty-five percent collection of the collections of that tax go to your water and sewer system. And then fifty percent of the collections of that tax go to street purposes. And if the changes were approved by the voters, the, the one cent tax would be used for debt service on the bonds and your water and sewer system. Whatever's left over after debt service would be used for your water and sewer system. Does anybody have any questions? And if there are no questions, now would be the appropriate time to entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place the ordinance on its first reading by title on.
I'll make that one.
Jimmy Clark, ready to motion?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Jimmy Clark.
Aye.
Carrie Brady. Chris Fuller.
Aye.
Ellen Moore.
Aye. Ordinance number twenty-three dash oh four, an ordinance amending ordinance number oh-two dash oh-two in order to authorize the net collections of the one cent sales and use tax levying within the city of Glenwood, Arkansas by ordinance number oh-two dash oh-two to be used for one or more of the following. A, water and sewer purposes, and B, to pay and secure the repayment of bonds approved by the voters and issued by the city from time to time to finance and refinance capital improvements and prescribing other matters relating there too. Uh, and then if I could have a motion to suspend the rules and place the ordinance on its second reading by title on.
Carrie Brady, ready to motion, and second.
I'll second.
Ellen Moore seconded. Roll call, please.
Jimmy Clark. Aye.
Carrie Brady.
Aye.
Chris Fuller.
Aye.
Ellen Moore.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash oh four, an ordinance amending ordinance number oh-two dash oh-two in order to authorize the net collections of the one cent, one percent sales and use tax levying within the city of Glenwood, Arkansas by ordinance number oh-two dash oh-two to be used for one or more of the following. A, water and sewer purposes, and B, to pay and secure the repayment of bonds approved by the voters and issued by the city from time to time to finance and refinance capital improvements and prescribing other matters relating there too. Okay, if we could have a motion to suspend the rules and place the ordinance on its third reading by title on.
Carrie Brady, ready to motion?
I'll second.
Chris Fuller seconded. Roll call, please.
Jimmy Clark.
Aye.
Carrie Brady. Chris Fuller.
Aye.
Ellen Moore.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash oh four, an ordinance amending ordinance number oh-two dash oh-two in order to authorize the net collections of the one percent sales and use tax levying within the city of Glenwood, Arkansas by ordinance number oh-two dash oh-two to be used for one or more of the following. A, water and sewer purposes, and B, to pay and secure the repayment of bonds approved by the voters and issued by the city from time to time to finance and refinance capital improvements and prescribing other matters relating there too. And then if there are no questions, um, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, but now would be the appropriate time to entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance.
I'll make that motion.
Ellen Moore made the motion.
We got two more.
Should we level up, Andy?
Jimmy Clark, second. Roll call, please.
Jimmy Clark.
Aye.
Carrie Brady.
Aye.
Chris Fuller.
Aye.
Ellen Moore.
Okay. Now, we are on resolution number one. And this is gonna be officially numbered resolution twenty-three dash oh two. This resolution is just referring, the ordinance that we just passed is referring it to the voters. And the ballot, how it's gonna look, it's about in the middle of the page there. That's how the ballot questions start. Uh, and we have to read, I'll read it, so we have to read this in full and then we'll do a motion to adopt. All right. Resolution number twenty-three dash oh two. Whereas the city council of the city of Glenwood, Arkansas, the city, has adopted ordinance number twenty-three dash oh four, that's the one we just adopted, on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, ordinance number twenty-three dash oh four. And whereas the city council desires to refer ordinance number twenty-three dash oh four to the voters for approval or rejection, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Glenwood, Arkansas. Section one, there is hereby called a special election to be held on August eighth, twenty twenty-three. At which election there shall be submitted to the voters of the city the question of whether ordinance number twenty-three dash oh four shall be approved or rejected. Section ten, the question of approving or rejecting ordinance number twenty-three dash oh four shall be placed on the ballot in substantially the following form. Ordinance number twenty-three dash oh four, an ordinance amending ordinance number oh-two oh two, dash oh two, in order to authorize the net collections of the one percent sales and use tax levying within the city of Glenwood, Arkansas, Arkansas, by ordinance number oh-two dash oh two to be used for one or more of the following. A, water and sewer purposes, and B, to pay and secure the repayment of bonds approved by the voters and issued by the city from time to time to finance and refinance capital improvements and prescribing other matters relating there too. Four, ordinance number twenty-three dash oh four, against ordinance number twenty-three dash oh four. Section three, the election shall be held and conducted in the vote canvas and the results declared under the law and in the manner now provided for municipal elections and only qualified voters of the city shall have the right to vote in the election. Section four, the results of the election shall be proclaimed by the mayor and the proclamation shall be published one time in a newspaper having a general circulation in the city. Which proclamation shall advise that the results as proclaimed shall be conclusive unless it's hatched in the course within thirty days after the day of publication. Section five, a copy of this resolution shall be, A, filed with the Pike County clerk and the Montgomery County clerk at least seventy days prior to the election date, and B, given to the Pike County Board of Election Commissioners and the Montgomery County Board of Election Commissioners so that the necessary election officials and supplies may be provided. Section six, the mayor and city clerk, fore and on behalf of the city, are hereby authorized and directed to do any and all things necessary to call and hold a special election as herein provided as of seventeen twenty twenty-three.
Now have a motion to accept resolution twenty-three oh two.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Second. Roll call, please.
Jimmy Clark.
Aye.
Carrie Brady.
Aye.
Chris Fuller.
Aye.
Ellen Moore.
Okay, last but not least, uh, this is ordinance number four. It's gonna be officially numbered ordinance number twenty-three dash oh five. It should be the last one instead, or almost done. So why didn't it? And this ordinance is, um, submitting the questions on issuing bonds to the voters. So there's gonna be three questions submitted to the voters regarding the issuance of bonds. And that starts on page two, what they're gonna look like. So there's gonna be a refunding bond question for the two thousand and four bonds, a refunding question for the two thousand and six bonds, and a new money, a water and sewer bond question. So that's what the ballot is. And then I'll be happy to answer any questions. But if there are no questions, now would be the appropriate time to entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place the ordinance on its first reading by title on.
I'll make that motion.
Yes, I am? Yes.
Uh, Ellen Moore made the motion, Carrie Brady seconded. Roll call, please.
Jimmy Clark.
Aye.
Carrie Brady.
Aye.
Chris Fuller.
Aye.
Ellen Moore.
Aye.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash oh five, an ordinance calling a special election in the city of Glenwood, Arkansas, on the questions of issuing bonds under amendment number sixty-two to the constitution of the state of Arkansas for the purpose of financing and refinancing all or a portion of the cost of capital improvements and prescribing other matters pertaining there too. Then if I could have a motion to suspend the rules and place the ordinance on its second reading by title on.
Jimmy Clark made the motion.
I'll-
Carrie Brady seconded. Roll call, please.
Jimmy Clark.
Aye.
Carrie Brady.
Aye.
Chris Fuller.
Aye.
Ellen Moore.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash oh five, an ordinance calling a special election in the city of Glenwood, Arkansas, on the questions of issuing bonds under amendment number sixty-two to the constitution of the state of Arkansas for the purpose of financing and refinancing all or a portion of the cost of capital improvements and prescribing other matters pertaining there too. And then if I could have a motion to suspend the rules and place the ordinance on its third reading by title on.
I'll make that motion.
Chris Fuller made that motion. Carrie Brady seconded. Roll call, please.
Jimmy Clark.
Aye.
Carrie Brady. Chris Fuller.
Aye.
Ellen Moore.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash oh five, an ordinance calling a special election in the city of Glenwood, Arkansas, on the questions of issuing bonds under amendment number sixty-two to the constitution of the state of Arkansas for the purpose of financing and refinancing all or a portion of the cost of capital improvements and prescribing other matters pertaining there too. And then again, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but if we don't have any questions,